Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Silverman?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson? Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
Chair Gutierrez?
Present.
Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on our future Commission's agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Is there someone here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving along. Approval of minutes of May 2nd. Does anybody have any changes?
And through the chair, staff would like to clarify, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to clarify that on the draft minutes themselves, under item 6A, there is a typo in the address. It shows 1520 El Camino Real, but the address, the correct address is 1390 El Camino Real.
Okay. Any other corrections?
The change I have for the draft minutes is under the motion. Way at the bottom, I like the, so it says Commissioner Silverman made a motion to approve the project with staff's modification to condition number 10 and with an additional condition to be condition number 24, that the applicant be required to conduct an RF study on the highest floor occupied by the general public of which the results must demonstrate readings. I assume there's the word "less" is missing in there.
Noted. Will be corrected.
Any other changes? With that, can I get a motion to approve?
Please move approval with the addition of the word "less."
Can I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Silverman?
A.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. So moving on to the consent calendar. Is there members of the audience that are, that'd like to speak on any of the matters on the consent calendar?
Understood there was one.
Possibly. Or do you want to pull something from the content calendar?
I mean, you don't have to, but if you would like to, this would be the time that you would address the Commission.
Yeah, the emails.
Yes, the email has been forwarded to the Commission and it is part of the record.
Okay, does anything, go ahead.
I would like to speak on it for just a second.
Well, then we, whatever you want to speak on, we should pull.
We would pull, right? Pull B?
It's, pull... A.
Oh, you want to pull A?
I want to pull A.
And then I guess I would, I also want to pull B, but it'll be brief.
Mine will be brief, too.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty limited consent agenda, but I move to approve, I approve the little that is standing on the consent agenda, which is the minor amendment to November 16, 2015 Planning Commission minutes. I move approval of that. I don't know if it's an agenda anymore as much as it's a consent item, but I will move approval of that item.
Second?
Okay, can I get a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. So then we go right into A then, right?
Or...
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Who pulled it?
Scott pulled A, I can't be...
I pulled A partly because of the $600,000 that is being designated for L'Oriola Park. And I just want to make the comment that I want to make sure that the neighborhood over there is involved in the decisions that are made in that park. I think that being a resident that lives over there, I don't see $600,000 worth of things that need to be done in that park. So I just, I realize that this is just setting money aside for it, but I just want to make sure that the residents over there are part of the process. And that's the only comment I wanted to make.
So with that, unless someone has something else to say?
Well, since it's polled, I did have some questions I was actually holding for, because they just didn't trigger polling for me. I guess this question would be for Lisa or Al. I'm just curious what determines the priority and timing of the projects. I know the City Council goes through a priority setting and then a study session. I just wanted to see if there was anything additional, just to understand how this list came about and why we're, why these are the projects we're seeing right now.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that Grace Lee answer that question. She's here tonight.
Thank you.
Grace Lee is our city engineer.
Hi, Grace. I don't think it's on. Press the button.
It's there.
It's possible that Jesse turned you off. I would never do that to you, but Jesse may have turned you off.
I don't think I did. There.
None of the, and thanks.
Mr. Knoll over here.
I'll bill San Carlos Tech for that.
I missed that class.
Point one.
Sorry.
Thanks. Grace Lee, city engineer. I was saying that the priority of what project goes into what year, and really it's the first two years that we're going through the budget cycle for, depends on the needs, the improvement needs, at what timeframe and staff capacity to perform the project, as well as funding availability. So certain programs, like the sewer storm programs, we actually lay it out for five years. And the most pressing are the ones we want to do, the highest priority, the highest need, we would put in the first two years for funding.
And is that generally determined by staff with the approval of council?
Staff would, staff would go through it internally with the city manager and the different departments, with the directors, and then through the study session, the two days, council study session, council can move around the projects and the priorities.
Great, thank you. And then I just had a quick question again. I'm sorry, Grace, I'm not sure if this is for you or if this would be better for Al or Lisa. I noticed 817 Walnut, and I understand that part of the CIP is to set aside money for the initial phases of making a larger multifamily dwelling at that location. I'm just curious, will the residents who live there, and I understand there's four BMR, below market rate residents that live there, will they have assistance for relocation during construction, or how does that work?
Yeah, I think there's only two there now. But yes, they would be relocated and the city will cover the costs of relocation.
And then finally, I did notice that the downtown parking plan implementation is actually not in the CIP because it's already in the implementation phase, and I just wanted to make sure that at some point we'll get an update on that, on where that is and where the timeline is.
Certainly.
Great, thank you. That's all I had for the item I did not pull.
I had one more question on the relocation. Are they also guaranteed residents back into the new housing? Or is it, are there other criteria for them to meet, to be back into the new housing? Is it still the same? Do the people that are relocated, do they get relocated back if they choose?
Well, you know, that hasn't been determined yet, but I think that, I mean, I like that idea myself. So as we move forward and we start to put together a plan, that'll be a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Grace, since you were up and talking, what is the $600,000 for at L'Oriola Park?
That's the amount that the transit villages require to contribute. So we want to make sure we earmark that for the greater east side, and they talked about wanting to improve park improvements there. So we had, it's basically a placeholder for the L'Oriola Park.
But that doesn't have to be spent in those two years? If there are, if, if there are, isn't a need in that first two years, can that money be rolled over into years three and four?
I believe so. I believe we don't have to return it so we can keep the money. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to spend it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Move approval of the general plan conformity determination for capital improvement projects proposed for fiscal years 2016 to 2018.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioners Silverman?
A.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Okay. B. Scott, was that you who pulled that?
That's me. And I, the reason I pulled it was, I just wanted to, based on the email we received, I just wanted to, just to be clear on the record, well, for clarification purposes, that the purpose and intent submitted to us as required by GC Section 65402A is to keep the parcel as open space?
No, the, what's before the planning commission tonight is to determine whether the acquisition is consistent with the city's general plan, and it's very clearly laid out in the staff report that it is. And for the record, the council has already approved of the settlement agreement, the acquisition of the property.
So then, right now, we are, we are not under an obligation to make sure that the purpose and intent of the use of this property is for open space?
No, you're not. That's not before the planning commission tonight.
Okay. That confuses me a bit.
Yeah.
Just because literally I'm reading the analysis and that seems to be exactly what it says. Am I misinterpreting that? I'm looking, looking on the top of page two.
Yes, through the chair, in response to Commissioner Harper-Peterson's question, the staff report does indicate that the purpose of the government code is to make a general plan consistency finding that the acquisition of this parcel is consistent with the general plan. And in doing so, staff indicates that the general plan's land use designation is open space, the zoning is open space, and therefore, you know, acquiring this property, you know, as open space, designated as city open space would be consistent with the general plan. There's also some other elements noted in the staff report about trail connectivity, open space requirements in the general plan. So overall, the acquisition in and of itself would be, you know, would be, would comply with the policy guidance that's already contained in the general plan. And I think Mr. John's question had to do with whether the city would be taking action, making a statement that the designation would not change from open space to something else. There's no current plans to do that.
Right, but the zoning, but the zoning is in fact open space already, so it's fine. Okay. Thank you for that, that helps.
Just to ease everyone's mind, what would it take for the designation of that land to change? A vote of three members of the city council?
Yeah, so it actually, you would have to be the first group to review it and make a recommendation to the city council, and then they would have final decision-making authority, and it would be three out of the five. Yes.
Thank you.
I move that the planning commission be resolved to make the finding that the acquisition of real property located to the south of Crestview Drive and in between La Mesa and Edmunds Drives Lot Q conforms to the city of San Carlos's general plan.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
A.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. So we're done with our quick content calendar, huh? Moving along to public hearing. Procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application. Follow with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If we challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, a public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city and/or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing minutes. The first item. A, 2115 White Oak Way, APN 051, 281, 300, consideration of design review and protected tree removal permit request to continue to a date uncertain.
Move that 7A, 2115 White Oak Way be moved, be continued to a date uncertain?
Second. Beatcha.
You did.
Roll call vote on that, please. Unless there's discussion. Anybody want to discuss that one? Okay.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
A.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
A. Just to be like David. Moving along, item B, 520 El Camino Real, APN 050, 074, 020, consideration of design review, tentative map, and below market rate housing plan approval for a nine-unit mixed use development. This was continued from February 1st. And I think it's, is it Jill? Jill?
There were people here than last time.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'll present to you the request for design review, tentative map, and below market rate housing plan approval for a new nine-unit mixed use development at 520 El Camino Real. Just to refresh your memory, the subject site is zoned MUD, mixed use downtown, and has a corresponding general plan land use designation of mixed use medium density, both of which allow up to 50 dwelling units per acre. This site is directly across the street from the San Carlos Caltrain Station. These are the existing site conditions. It is a fenced-in vacant lot between a gas station to the north and an office building to the south. The property is bounded by El Camino Real in the front and a public alley at the rear. The project requires planning commission approval of the following: design review, which is required for all new construction, tentative map, required for the condos, and a below-market rate housing plan, required for seven ownership units, and they are providing one onsite rental unit. Should be noted that the applicant's previous conditional use permit request for the parking reduction is no longer necessary since all of the required parking will be now accommodated onsite. Parking is fully provided through the use of three parking lifts. These lifts are permitted outright as an automated system will be in place to move the vehicles. Further, the applicant has proposed that two of the 14 spaces be dedicated to the commercial uses during business hours and utilized by the residential units off-peak hours. So these are the front and rear elevations. Kind of difficult to see. So instead of providing all cement block, although, so, excuse me, instead of providing all cement block around the sides and rear of the building, the applicant will now wrap the base of the structure for a height of approximately four feet with high-quality porcelain tile. So you could see on the sides, and then on the south elevation, the applicant has proposed wrapping the entire visible side that will be seen from the gas station around to the jog in the building. A shadow study was submitted to staff on May 16th, 2016, that shows the longest and shortest days of the year, respectively. The architect can discuss further during his presentation. I think you have that shadow study at the dais. The following slides illustrate the changes that were made to the color palette. The paint colors were changed to more muted earth tones as follows: beige at the stucco exterior, a darker beige cement block and porcelain tile combination at the ground level, horizontal plank siding in a light olive tone, horizontal plank siding at the recesses and under the glass balconies on the side elevations in a darker sage green, sunshades and metal trellises and the fascia will be a medium gray. And actually, I have the color board right here if you'd like to pass it around. This was the south elevation that the Commission saw at the February 1st hearing. The applicant was directed to reduce the bulk and mass of the side elevations and to step back the third story. So these were the renderings that were provided recently to staff, including a May 16th iteration. The trellis was wrapped around the side of the building to provide additional articulation. The applicant was able to drop the solid wall at the front facade so that it is now only proposed at the second floor and extends up to the third floor. Balconies were also proposed at the third floor, but due to necessary compliance with the development standards, had to be eliminated since openings within close proximity to property lines are not allowed. The revised rendering of the south elevation was provided to staff on May 16th, but needs some additional refinement in the material selection. So staff recommends that you would add the following condition, number 28, which you should also have a copy of. Here is the rendered north elevation, which was requested by the planning commission on February 1st, 2016. The landscape architect added an additional street tree per the Commission's direction. There are now three street trees instead of two. All other landscaping remains the same, both on and off-site. Other requested entitlements include below-market rate housing plan approval. The applicant has chosen to provide the below-market unit for rent versus for sale. Since only one unit is proposed, it must be provided for and restricted to occupation by very low-income households. This rental unit proposed is a two-bedroom unit and measures 870 square feet in area and is located on the front right-hand corner of the structure on the third floor. This is comparable to other units within the building. As part of the rental agreement, the city may only approve a proposal to rent the unit in exchange for one incentive. So because the applicant is now providing all required parking onsite, it makes sense to request the financial assistance clause. The housing administrator believes that a fee waiver for the partial unit could be considered. This will be addressed as part of the below-market rate housing agreement. The tenant, excuse me, the applicant has also provided an application for a vesting tentative map to subdivide the property into nine for-sale condo units. One of those nine will be a rental unit, but it's still treated as though it were a separate unit. To recap, the changes made to the project since February 1st, 2016 were the ability to accommodate all parking onsite, thereby eliminating the need for a conditional use permit, reduce the bulk and mass of the side elevations, step back the third story, and planted one additional street tree. The other items, such as construction parking, commercial tenant parking, and the combining of commercial spaces, have all been addressed within the draft code compliance certificate as well as the application materials. So these would be the formal motions, should you choose to make them. I'm available for any questions you have for staff.
Does anybody have any questions for Jill right now?
Could you just give me a, I'm sorry, just a little bit more information on what the financial assistance is? I mean, I have what is written here, but I just would like to hear from you, just sort of a summary, so I can understand it better.
Sure. So in general, I believe the financial assistance provision applies more to, basically, the interpretation has been made that the financial assistance clause, in this particular case, could be applied for the fee waiver for the BMR fees. I believe the partial fee, the unit count is 1.35, and so the applicant could request the 0.35 in fees that would need to be paid as the financial assistance.
The delta?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you explain the parking? So there's 14 parking spaces. Does the BMR unit have one of those parking spaces? So for example, eight of, eight of the units are going to be for sale and one is rental. So explain the parking.
So whatever parking is required for the BMR unit would be the same as for all the other units. So it's a two-bedroom unit, and I believe two-bedroom BMR unit, or two-bedroom units in general require 1.5 spaces per unit.
But if eight of them are for sale, how do you designate 1.5 parking spaces for a BMR unit?
Which actually leads into a question I think I touched on last time we heard this. Just because most of the units will be for sale and one will be for rent, who exempt, who exactly administers the rental? I mean, in the beginning, I assume it's the developer, but once the HOA is in effect, do they administer the rental? Is that, is that right?
With city oversight.
Okay.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the question that didn't get answered is parking?
Is who decides how they get the parking?
How do you create 1.5 parking spaces for a rental unit if you're selling all the others? And so obviously, when you sell it, you're selling parking spaces along with the unit. the unit. So either you're giving two parking spaces or you're giving one parking space. And if you're only giving one to the BMR unit, how are you going to compensate for the other half a parking space?
I think we're going to leave that up to the applicant to explain, probably.
Yes, you would like the applicant to respond to that. So overall, the requirement—so just to recap, there is a total of nine units. There are 14 parking spaces provided. So they're meeting the overall requirement, and as Jill touched upon, that there would be some sort of shared arrangements for the commercial spaces, because that was one of the concerns the Commission had from the last meeting. So in terms of meeting the parking requirement, the project does, but we don't have the specifics on how the developer plans to assign those parking spaces in conjunction with the sale. So I think that would be best answered by the applicant.
Just really quickly, then, Jill, before you sit down. The side facing El Camino, now that it's not going to have those glass balconies, it seems to have some of the same problem for me. And I guess I'm just curious what the process is to continue to work with staff to make that look better. I mean, that seems to be the side most visually seen by everybody driving through Holly, which was of our initial concerns.
Yes, that's a great question, because staff completely agrees with your comments relative to that particular elevation. Staff had worked with the applicant on numerous reiterations, revisions to that particular elevation, and we—up until the point where we scheduled this for a hearing, it was recently discovered that the required setbacks for rooms containing windows and doors—and this is for light and air separation purposes—would require anywhere between five to 15 feet of additional setbacks from the property line. So we consulted with the applicant on what he would like to do if he'd want to go back and redesign, because that would present a significant change. The applicant chose to eliminate the openings. You're not required to have the openings, but they do impact the way that that particular elevation reads, which is why we included condition number 28. We're asking that the applicant provide—and he may have some ideas on how he wants to do that now—but rather than design right on the fly, what we've done is added a condition where the applicant would be required to revise that elevation, include providing a rendering to staff to show how that uppermost story can be further articulated prior to building permit issuance. If the Commission feels strongly and would like to have that element come back to the Commission, we can change that. But the applicant has otherwise met all of the requirements and was asking to be heard by the Commission tonight. So we felt that this would be a good opportunity to add the condition and continue to refine that a little bit more, but that's something we could bring back to the Commission if the Commission prefers to see that specific detail.
Yeah, I mean, I see—I clearly see the applicant's concern and staff's concern, and it's obviously a bummer to have to remove the, you know, the balconies, but I understand. I understand why, given the property line. So I don't know how the other Commissioners feel about it. I guess—I'm just particularly concerned about that elevation and just really want to make sure we do it right, since it's just kind of in the gateway of coming into the city, but I'm open.
That's probably the most important side.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
So just one other little small thing. The staff report shows during the September 21 meeting—wasn't it a February 1 meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I thought I missed a meeting, so I'm sorry. So February 1, 2016.
Yes, if that was in the staff report, it should be corrected.
Is that it for Jill?
Is that it for Jill right now?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So, thanks, Jill. So I know we're going to ring the applicant up and we're going to talk about parking, and I don't want to put the city attorney on the spot, so something for you to think about before I ask too many pointed questions. I still don't think there's enough parking, and I see that they've met the parking requirement. My view is that they don't have enough parking because we have retail spaces which don't require parking, and yet there's no place for anyone visiting that retail to park. So my question to the city attorney at some point today is, can I vote—would a vote against this project based on a lack of adequate parking be supported despite the fact that they meet the parking requirement? And you can think about that for a second if you'd like, or you can answer right now. It's up to you.
I had a similar concern about the transit pass encouragement, knowing that they were meeting the parking—that parking was essentially being fully provided. It still seems like a bit of a bummer, not to have an encouragement for transit when they're literally right there on El Camino across from the train. But I didn't know if we had standing to require that now.
So my understanding from the staff report that there is a finding that parking is adequate, that it meets the requirement. So if you were to deny the application based on inadequate parking, that would—in my opinion, would not constitute a finding, a basis, to deny the application based on that reason.
So it's your view that if they meet—regardless of site conditions, does not matter what the site's like, doesn't matter what the neighborhood's like, doesn't matter if they've met the criteria—the general criteria of the ordinance code—we have to say there's adequate parking. We have no choice.
If it meets the code, they meet the parking requirement. Another way to address this would be to change the ordinance if this continues to be a problem, but for this particular application, if it meets the parking requirement, unfortunately, you can't make a finding that it doesn't and base your denial based on that.
Any other questions for staff right now? Okay. Would the applicant like to do
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come before you again. I'd like to say that we heard you loud and clear last time, and we really went back to the boards and we worked very hard. I'd like to thank Director Survey and Lisa Porras and Jill, of course, for all the time and effort they've put in to help us iron out as much as we can and make this building possible. As has been said, we have added more parking. We added three mechanical parking spaces, which are considerably costly. We've also stepped back the side of the building that faces the garage because it is visible from—as people come into San Carlos, they see it. Obviously, wanting to make it look as best as possible, we put a balcony there with glass railing and a slider, and we put some people up there saying hello. Well, unfortunately, you know, I understand the rules that say that, you know, openings into habitable spaces need to be within a certain distance of a property line in the event that somebody builds a building there. However, we do know that gas station's going to be there for at least 50 years. These units on the upper level do not need this one balcony for light and air. They have ample, ample light and air in a balcony already. One of them facing El Camino and the other one facing the rear. This is simply done for architectural reasons in order to improve the look of the building. If there's anything in your power to bring that back in opposition to the code, then please, by all means, help us and let's put that back. If it's not possible legally to bring it back, what we promise is that we will do something that will be very attractive. We have worked with the City of San Carlos before. We have worked with these planners before. We would like your trust to be able to come up with a solution. I mean, we can even put a glass element there that may look like a window, but it's not really a window. I mean, I know that's kind of cheating. We're not in Disneyland here, but there are times when some gestures like that would be helpful, and we are not excluding any possible solution to this. And I'm going to turn around to our friendly planners and see if there's a solution they can help us with. We will promise to work this out with staff. One thing that we would like to request—we've been at this almost two years, and we have done absolutely everything that was asked of us. We responded to the gas station's concerns. We responded to neighborhood concerns. We have upped the parking. We have really a very nice-looking building with some very attractive materials. We now have—the porcelain tile almost comes all the way around. It's all over the front. It's all over the sides. I think you're not going to see—the only part that's painted concrete is the rear. We have very nice balconies. We have a beautiful wood material that we have selected for it. And we have toned down the colors so they're not as loud as they were before. I think they're all going to harmonize. It's going to be a great place to sit down and go have a cup of coffee if you're going to—you know, issues like the bus passes and so on, we follow the rules of zoning and whatever. It says it says. Now, let me try to explain a little bit what happens with half cars. That's the way the rules are written, and there's no such thing as a half car. When a person rents the affordable unit—a family rents the affordable unit—they have access to the parking in the building. The parking in the building says that they own 1.5, but that means that they may have one car—one space assigned to them, and the rest are up for grabs. You can park in those spaces if it's available. If it's not available, you cannot park there. That's the way it works. When the unit—let's say the entire building got sold from the developer who's building it to a group of homeowners association, the homeowners association would be obligated to do exactly the same thing. And the people who live in the affordable unit would be treated no differently than anybody else in the sense they would have one assigned space, number three is yours, but available parking spaces can be used by other members of the family or visitors. So there is no need to actually sell a half a car, is what I'm saying. The entire parking facility belongs to the homeowners association with one person owning a specific, and that's how I have seen it dealt with in other projects. As I said, we do a lot of these. This is one of our specialties. We currently have six of them in different parts of the Bay Area, and that's how you solve a problem. For sure, the people in the affordable unit will not be impacted by this in any other way. Regarding the additional parking, as I said, we have expanded the amount of parking to what's required. We are spending a substantial amount of money for the three additional ones. We feel that it is a very good parking ratio. We work in other cities where the parking ratios are a lot lower. Some cities don't even require them anymore, but we respect the rules as they are given to us. And what I would like to request is, given the effort that we've put into this and the effort that the planning department has put into this, we would like for you to trust us to deal with this issue with staff at a later date, given our record with this city and the work that we have shown and the commitment that we have given to this project for the last two years.
Can I ask some follow-up questions of staff based on the applicant's presentation? I guess one of the things—because the gas station is likely to remain for a very long time—is there a way to give a variance for the balconies? I'm not going to lie. I kind of like them.
We're not sure about being able to make the findings for a variance. The variance would have to say there's some physical characteristic of the lot that's unusual and would limit the applicant's ability to develop on it because of the—in the windows really don't rise to that.
And you don't think the fact that it's kind of at the gateway of our city is special enough to trigger that?
You know, I do think that that's a good reason to put windows there, but to make the findings, I think, would be a challenge. There's another way to do it, but it's more challenging, and that is through a plan development application. And what a plan development application allows you to do is change the code for a unique situation like this. That's the intent of that part of the code. So we agree that it would look a lot better with the window. Now, a PD is more expensive. It would require a zone change by the Planning Commission recommended to the city council, who would have final decision-making authority. And it is likely that we would recommend that that be done for that, I think. Yeah, and there may be some other requirements. It may be an acre that's required or something for a lot size, but we could look into that if the applicant wants to do that. I thought one thing that the applicant suggested is a faux window there.
How would that—
And, you know, quite frankly, we've used it before, and I've used it a number of different times, and the reason that you don't notice it is because you think it's a real window. And I'll give you an example. At the San Carlos Marketplace, where the Starbucks is on the corner there, well, the back of the building, they wanted to make it a wall, and I said I didn't like that. Because it was highly visible from the roadway, so I suggested that they put in a window there, and it looks like the window to the back of Starbucks. If you take a look as you drive by, you think it's just a regular window. Now, it's tinted glass because that's the kind of glass they have on the front, if you look, and it just looks like a regular—it's framed in and everything, and it looks like a real window. So it fools the eye. It's not as elegant, but it's one option that I thought was a pretty good suggestion by the architect. And there's probably a number of different—a few other things that could be done to that upper part of the elevation to improve breaking up the mass there. I think that they've employed different textures, patterns, and colors, and there's a sort of a long linear wall area, horizontal rather—wall area right below the sunscreen there that's problematic. And it wasn't before with those windows. It really looked nice, broken up and everything. So that's really focused—that was that condition that Ms. Porras mentioned. We'd like to focus on that area and continue to try and break up that horizontal mass there. And there's a couple of other little minor things that we could do to, I think, improve that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So you could put the railing there and a fake window, so it would look like there's a balcony there, but there really isn't?
Didn't think about the railing, but theoretically, yes. You could do the whole— you could do the whole thing. What we would ask the architect to do is provide us with some examples of that, as—you know, and I think the architect may want to speak, but we could ask for that to be rendered like this in a computer model and take a look at it. But yes, theoretically, anything's possible there.
Oh, I did have one other question about parking, and since you may want to respond to this, too, I'll go ahead and ask it first before we bring you back up. I think—now, I don't presume to speak for the rest of the Commission, but I know that in our previous conversations, our bigger concerns about parking have always been the commercial spaces and whether—depending on what goes in there, whether they would trigger additional challenges for the surrounding areas. And having two shared spaces, I think, is helpful, but having more shared spaces would be even more helpful. My point is, the residential parking doesn't bother me at all, is what I'm trying to say, but perhaps if—instead of just two shared spots, maybe it was four shared spots during business— business hours, that might be helpful. And I'm just, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, but I just wanted to say that.
If they're only going to sign one per unit and the other five are going to be open, then why wouldn't they be able to have five shared spaces? I mean, the...
You make an excellent math point there.
My concern is the, is the, is the commercial space as well, because two spaces basically would be the two people who are working there presumably, and then where are, I mean, I guess, if it, and I appreciate that it actually looks really nice, but they chose to put a coffee shop in the rendering.
In the rendering, yeah.
And coffee shops have customers, and I just, there's nowhere for them to park.
Certainly not in front.
So, maybe now, sorry Jesse, don't mean to jump the gun, but maybe now would be a good time for the applicant to come back and speak to those issues, unless you guys had more stuff to throw out there.
Well, he'll be up here, we can probably ask him.
Okay.
Issue number one, we are definitely willing to provide the faux window, I think it will look great, I think we will design it properly, we will render it properly, we will show it to staff, and it's going to look just great. And the moment we add the slider, we're also going to add the glass railing, because otherwise it doesn't look like a balcony, it looks like somebody could just fall off. Yes, and it's going to look exactly as in our original design with that look. This is something that is actually not that hard to do, and since we already have it in the budget, we might as well go ahead and do it. Regarding the parking for the commercial, you know, I cannot really, I am just the applicant, I'm not the owner of the property, don't have the ability to change those things. I know that, given...
Isn't the owner sitting right behind you?
That, one of the owners is sitting right behind me. Given that people are going to be paying a fair amount of money for these units, they have the right to at least share some parking spaces. So, what we are suggesting now is two parking spaces shared for the commercial and the rest shared by the residents, we feel is fair, we could change it, we could make three and two as opposed to two and three, you know, we could play that. I believe that we are providing an adequate number of parking spaces. As I said, this is a transit village situation. We have buses, we have shuttles, we have bicycles, we have a transit village going in there. A lot of the, if we end up being able to sign a coffee shop, which would, I think would be fantastic, there's nothing I would love to see more than a lot of people out there hanging out and just enjoying themselves. I believe a lot of these people will not be coming in automobiles, I think they will be coming in public transportation and...
People are going to come to your coffee shop on public transportation?
Well, they may be coming to the transit village area, they may be coming to the train station, maybe coming to one of the other shops, and they may stop by and get a cup of coffee. We don't have to have a coffee shop, we can have something else, but I, we just, this is, when we put signs on the buildings, just to illustrate a possibility, we don't have a tenant as of now. But, going back to my original point, we need housing. We're providing nine very good units here, one of which is for low income of the, at the lowest level. We have spent two years working very diligently with planning staff, we have done many, many drawings. I think we have a really good product here, we're asking for your approval, and we're promising that those two items, issues that are remaining will be resolved, and they will resolve successfully with staff. So, thank you again.
Yeah, I think that, my personal opinion is, is I think we, I think the applicant's done what he can to try to help the situation with the parking, but if, I think if we, as a planning commission, it seems like we're trying to have applicants solve a problem that we have with the zoning. And if we really feel that zoning and the parking is incorrect, that we should probably make a recommendation to city council to look at the zoning and make a recommendation for change. But I think that what they're doing, I think that, I think that they've, I think that they've made their best effort to, to help the situation.
You know, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree, I don't have a problem with, well, I have some problems with the zoning generally, but there's something somewhat unique about this particular property. I mean, it's not, it's not that I have a problem with the zoning code, well, I do, but, but anyway.
It's this particular location, you've got no public parking.
And the location.
You've got a one-hour zone, maybe 40 feet, 50 feet, maybe even longer than that, 100 feet, and it's a one-hour zone, and those spots, there's probably three of them, they're always...
I agree that, I don't like the situation with the parking whatsoever, but to the extent that we can make the applicant solve it, is what I'm, what I'm saying, is I don't know, how far can we actually push that?
So, here is my sort of take on the situation. I don't think that there's adequate parking, but I don't feel like we can push them into creating more parking. But there's a balance between parking and transit, and what I see is that they've solved the park, they've met the standard for parking, but the way that maybe this should be solved is through some sort of either discounted transit passes or, you know, something like that. And I don't know, I don't think we're allowed to actually force them to do a transit pass because of the situation, but that may be where the give is in this, okay, is if there's something that the developer or owner can do as far as, as providing transit passes as an alternative to the fact that, because it is so close to the transit, that may be the give.
Well, I do have an agreement from the owner on that, so we're willing to provide passes, whether it's a code requirement or not, we can provide it. Obviously, we're not going to provide it forever, there's a limited, there's a number of years, and then beyond that, it disappears.
So, what, can you elaborate on that?
Well, I don't know exactly what the requirement is for the city of San Carlos, but we've been asked in other places to do two years, three years, and five years.
Okay.
I will say that probably the bigger transit need is for the employees of the commercial spaces especially. If they're going to be the ones parking in the only two spots for the commercial, you can see how that would be a bigger challenge, so particularly getting them to park somewhere else would be very helpful.
And for me, the other piece of this is a transit pass for the BMR unit.
Right.
Okay, so...
And as I mentioned earlier, I was already disappointed that, because it is in a TOD area, that the TOD encouragement would be somehow left off, so I actually would like it regardless, but also for employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually have a nexus for it, because I think we did on San Carlos Avenue, there was a commercial element to it, and that owner...
Well, and also, one of the findings we have to make is whether the site is physically suitable for the type of development, and I think that you could make an argument that to the extent that there is insufficient parking in the type of development, that it's, the site is not physically suitable, so...
May I ask a question of staff really quickly? So, just on the parking issue, say, we go ahead with kind of where we're at, it sounds like maybe some transit passes, maybe some employee alternatives, but that, depending on who the commercial customer is for these two spaces, they end up parking at the Shell Station constantly, what then is triggered if there's a constant problem with its, with Shell being parked at, say, five years down the road? How does that get handled? By the commercial people, not by the residential people, because I honestly don't think that's going to be the issue.
Can I just say something regarding the parking at the Shell Shell Station? Because we've had a lot of experience with that.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Why don't you, yeah, they're still talking over there, so...
We have met with the owners of the Shell Station three times, we have offered a lot of things, we've done absolutely what they asked, we sat back, we did everything they asked. They keep saying, oh, people will park in our gas station. The reason parking their gas station is because it's unsupervised. They don't have any fences, they don't have any limits, they don't even have a sign that says, "Parking for customers only." They don't have that, you can go look. I suggested to the owner, why don't you invest $20 in a sign? Why don't you put a low fence or some planting in a way that doesn't make that driveway so wide open and immediately says, "Don't get in here because you're going to get towed." They also have, you know, they have a gas, you know, they sell gas over there, they have an enclosure for it, which makes it very difficult to come in from that side anyway. I believe that this issue, they also just built a building which sits diagonally and is kind of strange looking, if you ask me, but it already takes up a substantial portion of the gas station, there's not that much parking space there.
So, you're saying there could be some, some other ways to negate...
Well, I think that they have made a big issue out of this, you know, and I think they've done it without really the benefit of wanting to do something to help us. They were actually opposed to us, and this is really not a problem, and if it is a problem, they should solve it, it's their property, nobody in our building is going to park there. These units will be sold to very responsible people.
Yeah, I want to reiterate, I really don't think your residents are going to be the ones with the issue. I'm thinking, I'm thinking more transient customers that can't be caught fast enough to enforce, say, you know, going, picking up a coffee for 20 minutes is kind of, is kind of my thinking.
My experience with corner gas stations, and they are disappearing very fast, there are no gas stations left in the corners in San Francisco and in many other cities, they're disappearing for housing because it makes sense to build housing where gas stations used to be. The problem of people parking in gas stations long-term is really not the issue. The people who go there to park, park because there is a giant market there, and they can go buy Coke and other things, that's the reason. That building was built there, and it's very short-term parking, and it's primarily for that reason. I don't think anybody from our building, and we really should not be penalized for their inability to safeguard their own property.
Can I ask staff to comment on that?
Yes, we were just having that conversation, as you probably saw, and so, this is a situation whereby you could have people parking on somebody else's private property, and typically that's enforced by that private property owner. I mean, I've been to situations before where sometimes the private property owner would even hire or have a staff person kind of have their eyes out, and if, you know, I've seen them follow people into, away from the spot and say, you know, please remove your car, otherwise you're going to, we're going to have to tow it. So, really, if there isn't any kind of problem that would arise, my understanding is it would be monitored by the, by Shell Gas Station, it's a private matter.
I would agree with staff on that one. Okay. Am I the only one that would totally park at Shell and run in and get coffee? I hope, I hope, but you're right, admittedly, if they monitor it better and had a person come say that they would tow it.
Why would you park in Shell, there's a parking lot right next to it?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's full. But, okay, I mean, if you think that's, that's just a problem I'm envisioning that isn't going to happen, then I'm okay with that.
I do think it's going to happen.
Oh, as do I.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's...
And again, I don't want to say that I'm more, that some of the responsibility shouldn't lie with Shell, of course, it is their property, and they should, they should be, they should be monitoring who parks there, but admittedly, I just see it being a concern, and I'm thinking, is there a way we can, we can anticipate it? That's all. And if there isn't anything else we can do, then I guess there isn't anything else we can do, but...
Oh, I think there are things we can do, I mean, we could deny the project based on an inability to make finding five, we could indicate to the developer that we were inclined to deny the project based on an inability to make finding five unless they made whatever changes that you proposed, whether they agreed to make the changes that you proposed.
And, to be honest, the only change I propose is perhaps more sharing of, between the resident and commercial spaces, and not much more, to be honest, but that's if, I'd really rather hear what some of the other commissioners think of this, because I've been, I've been monopolizing too much time on this subject.
Who wants to go?
Can I say something? Yep. On conclusion, that this space is going to be a coffee shop. I think we've already indicated that this is simply for the drawing, and yet everything I hear is, nobody will walk over to get coffee without being able to park there. I think let's redraw this as an office space, let's redraw it as some other usage, so it eliminates this perception that, you know, in order to go buy coffee, we have to park a car, which is not the case. I mean, there's a Caltrain station across the street, people get off the Caltrain station, they will walk over, and they will buy coffee.
Yeah, I agree.
And frankly, if I'm the business owner, I need to consider that whether or not I want to put my coffee shop at that location, okay, and, you know, versus, let's say, a Starbucks that's in a strip mall. So, these are all, you know, considerations that need to be accounted for here. I mean, I understand the sensitivity, you have to understand, these costs are pretty significant, pretty soon, this is not going to happen, this development, and if you prefer the parking space that's there now or the parking lot, that's kind of where we're headed, unfortunately, because, you know, from a dollars and cents standpoint, which at the end of the day, it has to make sense for us to develop this, pretty much rapidly deteriorating, especially with the BMR unit, you know, we would consider doing the passes if that's something that would satisfy...
And I think we're all sensitive to that, honestly, you'd probably have to sit through all of our meetings to know that.
Yeah, no.
But, we obviously want it to be feasible for the developer, we really do.
I understand that. So, one of my questions is...
Over here, let's see problems.
I'm going to turn off your mic over there.
If they're looking at potentially retail, I mean, at potentially office, is there a way to balance that and say that if retail of some sort goes in there, that that would have to come back to us, whereas if they put office space in there of some sort, that that would be approved? And, and I'm a little concerned with that, because I'm worried about, you know, maybe it's a small sandwich shop or something like that, that people in the surrounding businesses walk to, or something like that.
Worried about the business owner, or are we worried about the Shell Station?
We're worried about the, I'm over here, the customers.
Neighbors yelling at us for their lack of parking, no, no, I mean, the actual neighbors we live by.
Currently is a lack of parking, so...
Right.
People parking right in front illegally, going in, running in, doing stuff, causing traffic problems.
I literally have like three or four pictures of that, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the concern.
Through the chair, if I could, if it's appropriate now to follow up on Commissioner Marster's comment with respect to land use, the purview of the commission for this, for this, for this project that's in front of you is design review. There's no conditional use permit component to it, so we're not really in a position to put conditions on the project with respect to land use, and, you know, I'm sure the applicant doesn't like that as well, because it sounds like you might commit to something different. The uses that would be allowed in these two commercial spaces that are less than 1,500 square feet is basically limited to those listed in the zoning ordinance, and it's not a wide array, a array of uses that are otherwise permitted in this zoning district, it's further limited to a specific set of uses, so that applicant would be, you know, the future uses of the property, as long as they're consistent with that limited set of uses, would be permitted in these particular spaces.
But if I remember correctly, office use actually has a higher...
But if I remember correctly, office use actually has a higher requirement for parking.
Yes, that's exactly.
So, you know, we're talking about switching it to, I mean, again, whatever the tenant is, it is. We don't know. The market will bear what the tenant is, but if we're looking at it from an office perspective, technically our requirement for office is much greater than it would be for retail and service use. So that's the dilemma. And really, I appreciate, I mean, you guys have done a great job in coming in different iterations and stuff. I don't think any of us are discounting that. This is, this is, there's a reason why this lot was vacant for so many years. This is a tough lot because it's so visible. And that's the, I think that's what we're having trouble with is, you know, I mean, you're going from having nothing there to...
But the visibility is going to improve drastically.
I would agree that the visibility is much better than it is right now and it's going to be an improvement. I think that the question that we're all trying to deal with, this is a design review. And, you know, that's, I mean, that's what I'm kind of hearing from everybody. It's like one thing triggers off.
I like the project. If it was almost anywhere else, I mean, I would approve it last time.
Put a sign up there for the next person to buy it.
What about uncoupled parking instead of, with the provision for the below-market unit? But what about uncoupled parking?
So I think that they've done a good job on the parking as it relates to the residents. I don't think we're talking about that anymore. And no tenant or no customer is going to go park in the back of an alley to find parking. They're going to find what's the easiest.
May I, may I offer a compromise solution?
Absolutely.
I had to twist my client's arm and he may fire me after this. We...
I think you misunderstood.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I'm not going to fire you.
No, I'm just kidding. I really am.
Wait, hang on. As far as I understand it, we meet the parking requirements. Am I wrong?
That's correct. The parking requirements are met for this project. The parking is consistent with the provisions of the code. And I know the commission has indicated the, some of the challenges with a site like this, but you'll find that there are probably many more sites like this along El Camino Real that have only the frontage off of El Camino Real and won't have the parking as well. And I know there's been a lot of speculation about future uses and that's what makes this conversation, I think, even more challenging. However, you know, I will reiterate that as proposed and with the uses intended for that, it is consistent with the provisions of the parking. There are, you know, although this site maybe is more highly visible and the characteristics of it make it a bit more challenging with thinking about how are people, how is it going to feel? How is it going to operate? But you have situations where people probably park in the Binkinis parking lot and run into Starbucks and nobody notices. You know, this, you know, it's just a matter of really having the private property.
There's a city lot behind there that a lot of people park at too. I mean, it's, again, it's the lack of the current situation that's in that, in that spot particularly.
And I actually see, I see your point in trying to redirect us into what's appropriate, what we can make the findings on and what we can't. I think what David had said though was that number five, the physical suitability for the site might trigger, might justify this conversation under design review.
This is design review, so if it wasn't a design review application, we probably wouldn't be even debating this anymore. I mean, it's, this is, the design review itself is triggering everything else off. I understand there's certain, you're meeting certain requirements, but it's this, like I'm saying, I'm on a broken record here. It's this particular lot, it's difficult. I mean, it's literally, the traffic counts are probably the highest here than most of the city.
Finding of insuitability would be based on parking, which is adequate. Well, why couldn't you park there?
Well, it's whether the site is physically suitable for the type of development. So, I mean, you have to look at everything.
Can I, can I ask a, may I ask an architect's question?
Of course.
If on El Camino Real, housing with commercial at grade is not suitable, then what would be suitable?
I think you're, I think you're ignoring, not intentionally, but unintentionally, the word "site." I'm not talking about El Camino. I'm not talking about the entire city of San Carlos. The finding is whether the site, this one specific site that we're talking about, is physically suitable for the type of development that you are proposing. And that is my, that is my concern.
But there are other sites on El Camino that are similar in size, some of them on corners and some of them in mid-block, that are severely underbuilt, some of them have businesses that are failing, that will in time become commercial and residential buildings with parking underneath if we are to house the number of people that we need to house in California. We need 2 million new units by 2030 and we cannot get that if it takes two years, and I'm being very, very frank, to get a small nine-unit project approved. We have done absolutely everything we can if because somebody wants to break the law and park illegally in order to go buy a cup of coffee. If for that reason, we deny nine families their homes, I think we need to think about our priorities. Now...
Yeah, I understand your concern.
I would like to say that as difficult as this site is, it is not any different from the one next to it. The one next to it right now is a parking lot with a tiny little commercial building and it will disappear in time and be put to use for what it really needs to be put to use, which is housing for families and some commercial at grade in order to liven up. El Camino Real, we were told by Lisa and Jill, is part of the El Camino Real Boulevard. A boulevard such as El Camino deserves three and four and five-story buildings. It's very wide and all the parking will be under the buildings or on the ground level or in the back. When you see an entire row of very well-designed, well-executed buildings, one next to each other, you wonder why we are concerned about the gas station, which really should, from a planning standpoint, eventually go. We cannot provide any more parking. We're providing the required parking. I do not have the authority to increase the number of parking spaces, but we are providing, in addition to providing full parking, we are providing the passes, which Mr. Marster suggested. We are going to provide additional incentives which are available under the TDM plan, such as information about available train times. We're doing that in other cities. There are many incentives that we can provide. We have ample bicycle parking and we will provide more if necessary. I do not believe, I think that it's excessive to throw the baby out with the bath water and say that this site is not suitable for housing and commercial. I think it is. If there ever was a site for housing commercial, this is definitely it. And so is the corner, and so is the site next to it and several other buildings beyond. We're talking about looking at the future. We're talking about housing people in California that do not have housing available to them, whether they have the money to buy it or not. I think that the mitigation measures that we are promoting, Mr. Gutierrez, Mr. Marster, Mr. Silberman, Ms. Bergman, what we are providing here is an excellent package. It makes no sense for us to be delayed a year in planning, you know, other planning motions. I believe that this is an excellent design and I hope and pray that you will approve it. Thank you.
I want to say that I, they met BMR, they're providing a below-market rate rental unit, they're putting in lifts, they're willing to change the facade, they're sharing their parking spaces, they're providing passes. I don't, and I, and I actually agree with the vision that you're painting for the future and what El Camino is going to look like 20 years from now or 40 years from now and how we're going to have more dense housing near our transit. That's basically what the general plans call for. So I think that if ever, I think we have to look at the long-term. I don't like, I don't like, and right now it doesn't make sense, right? Right now it makes sense that there's not enough parking, but I mean, if we're looking 10, 20 years in the future and we have the transit station there and you have people coming off and on transit, I think that it's going to be less of a problem than it is today. I personally, I'm going to vote for it with those provisions.
I would like to ask a couple more questions and then I think maybe it's time to close the public comment and we can have that discussion. But I would like to have, ask a couple more questions, not related to parking. And one is to staff. There was concern in the, in the last meeting about a left turn off of Holly Street. Do we know if that area has been painted on Holly Street?
Into the alleyway?
Yeah, the turn into the alleyway?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Right, okay.
I just wanted that answer. And then the second question that I have before I'm done and until we have the discussion amongst ourselves is trees. And so can your landscaper come up here, please? You've been sitting there very patiently and I'm sure you knew I was going to call you up at some point. So can you sort of tell me what's changed in the trees? I know you've got three street trees in the front. Thank you. Are, can you tell me the size of those trees? Are they going to be 15 feet? Are they going to be, I mean, what's the size of those trees going to be eventually?
They are going to, we have not designated a selection. But according to the recommendations of staff, we have agreed that they will be from the approved street tree list provided by the city.
Then before you leave, I'm going to ask staff, why, okay, can we put large trees along the street going forward? It seems to me like everywhere we put trees, they're like 12 feet tall maximum and we're now talking about putting 40-foot, 50-foot buildings along El Camino. And I want these trees to actually, sort of, the idea of complete streets is that the trees close the streets down and cause people to drive slower. And so I want to make sure that we're going to put trees that are appropriate to the height of the buildings. The maturity of the trees should be two-thirds to three-quarters of the size of the building. And I just want to make sure that that's going to happen for the street trees.
So the street tree that I believe has been selected for El Camino Real is the Zelkova tree. And so the, a number of years ago, there were some improvements that came forward to the city council, may have gone through the planning commission, I'm not quite sure. But it included street trees for El Camino, so it would be the signature tree. And that was selected against Zelkova is the, is the type of tree. And I believe that it grows, and I was just trying to look up the height of the tree. I think that it's similar to what we see in downtown in terms of the, of the height. Maybe one of you knows the Zelkova, or perhaps since you're an expert.
I do know that it is very similar to an elm tree. In fact, in many cities throughout the country, it's been used as a substitute for the elms that were lost to Dutch elm disease.
Zelkova serrata is a medium-sized deciduous tree, usually growing to 30 meters, 98 feet tall. It's characterized by a short trunk into many upright...
It's never going to grow to 98, to 90 or 100 feet here, but at least it's telling me that it might get to 30, 40 feet rather than...
Maybe there's another version of Zelkova.
I would suspect that under these conditions with the proximity of the buildings and the narrowness of the sidewalk and the planting area available, that it might ultimately get to 30 feet with maybe a 25-foot spread at maturity.
Okay. The second question I have about trees, are the trees along the side of the building? So I saw one picture in here where a different type of tree was shown, but I also, I am not sure exactly what you've chosen for the trees on the side.
Okay. Well, I should correct. So there are six species of the Zelkova. Some of them only grow 10 to 16 feet tall, so some are bush-sized.
I'm looking for trees to, street trees to be reasonably sized relative to the buildings. And somehow that needs to be communicated to the developers as, as they come along. Those are the trees, okay. And, and they get...
To address Mr. Silberman first, Zelkova serrata, the first one that you mentioned, is the one that is typically used in street tree plantings. That's the...
That's the big one.
That's the biggest one, yes. That photo is of the Spartan juniper, which is what we've specified for the south-side planting.
Thank you.
They're columnar, evergreen, very densely branched and leafed, and they will grow three to five foot in diameter and 15 to 20 feet tall.
Okay.
Fairly fast-growing.
Okay. They won't get more than 15 to 20 feet tall?
There are other varieties of juniper that will get taller than that, but unfortunately they are narrower.
Okay. Thank you.
According to grandboulevard.net, it's a Zelkova serrata, which is the taller one.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy with the landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have some questions for the applicant as of right now? Lisa, you look like you want to say something.
Yes. During this discussion, we found a provision in the code that would allow the applicant to maintain the window and door openings along the side elevation. And that is through the allowance of concession through the below-market rate housing ordinance. However, the applicant would need to decide between the financial assistance, the question that Commissioner Bergman raised at the beginning of this hearing, between that and the concession, which would allow the, you know, you to deviate from the otherwise required setbacks for each of those room types. So through that provision of the code, the applicant could maintain those openings and balconies as originally presented or in one of the, I'll get to that in a second. Let me just see if I can scroll through here. But he would be able, the applicants would be able to do that with the understanding that they would have to go there, forego the financial assistance, which would mean they'd have to pay that partial fee at the time of building permit issuance. And that's something that could be accomplished through design review.
Thank you, Lisa. I think they're talking. Dave, Scott, anybody have any further questions? I have a few questions, but I just want to see if everybody else has.
The applicant mentioned his agreement to add passes, but nothing was numerically stated. And I'm wondering if we can numerically state that somewhere in the conditions. Is that appropriate?
I figured that was the discussion that we would have.
Okay.
After, yeah.
But I think you want to get the applicant's agreement.
That's, that's why I wanted to ask that before we close public comment, to get their agreement.
So I had a couple of questions for the applicant. So the BMR unit is a rental. Any particular reason why we went that route?
I don't know. It was a decision from the owners. I don't know.
Okay. And the BMR requirement, is it 45 years?
I think it's a little, I think it's 50.
And thank you for getting us the shadow study. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Okay. The shadow study takes into consideration winter and summer solstice, which is the worst, the longest shadow conditions, summer and winter. As you can see, even in the worst condition, in winter, you really have very little shadow on the parking lot side, which was the area you were concerned about last time. It has some shadow coming up to a little bit, the edge of the concession building of the gas station. In summer solstice, there's a little bit of shadow on the south side, which would cover maybe, maybe a half of the cars.
maybe, maybe a half of the cars that are parked there. Most of the long shadows seem to be directed towards El Camino Real. Now, we do not have an extensive shadow study here, which would require about two months and substantial amount of money. But given these extremes, I believe that shadows do not pose a problem from this three-story building. I believe that what seemed like a heavy shadow last time was that when you do these computer renderings, you take a photograph and you put in the rendering into the photograph in Photoshop. And those shadows that we saw were actually shadows from the existing trees that are currently there, but will be replaced. But I mean, this is very good news for us.
Yeah, normally when we have a shadow study, it's a few times through the day.
That's correct. We simply did not have the time to go through the complete sequence. But what we have here are the worst conditions.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Is there anybody else who wanted to speak on this matter?
My name is Mike Bruno. I am the owner of 567-569 Laurel Street on the opposite side of the block where the proposed project is to be built. I spoke before you in February, had a number of things on a list that I brought up, primarily the parking. I know we keep going back to that. I was at home nursing a sick wife, watching you on TV, and I just had to come down here. And I fully support Mr. Silverman's position about the parking. Back in February, the applicants had stated they were going to continue to own and rent the spaces. Is that going to be the, what you're going to do? You're not going to do that anymore? Okay. Given that a lot of people work from home, they don't drive anywhere, they leave their cars parked. And I think I heard correctly that the parking is going to be open and random. I foresee a problem with the people that occupy that building jockeying for spots. You're going to have somebody that's going to drive off to work, they're going to come back, their spot's not going to be there. They're going to have to go find a place on the street. The applicant's architect, just a few months ago, has the attitude that the parking problem for the neighboring owners is our problem and not yours. And I take.
What did I say, sir?
That's what you said, sir.
No, I said the gas.
No, well, there's other.
Speak to us.
I beg to differ with you, sir. I interpret it that way and perhaps some of you others did too. The, again, the commercial space customers are not going to have a place to park. They're going to be imposing on other property owners on that block. It's all private spaces, all the parking is private. You're going to have, you know, parking wars and towing people constantly. It's not going to work. You know, I have a few other things, but I'll, you know, I'll reserve those for another time. But I just wanted to make those points and I really support your thoughts about, you know, the negative parking situation, even though they seem to meet the requirement.
Mike, now's the time to bring up any other points because we're probably.
No, I'll leave it.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Absolutely.
I think it's important for people in neighborhoods to understand the importance of building buildings for people to live in. And parking will never be soft. But we have the right number of cars as required by the planning department and by the City of San Carlos. We are offering additional mitigations. I don't know how many cars people think would satisfy this in order to make this better. Two cars per unit, three cars per unit, I don't know. It seems that every city in the Bay Area has a different idea these days, especially as we realize the importance of public transportation to our survival. Certainly, I would love to give this gentleman, and I respect him, and I'm sorry if I interrupted you, I'd like to give you three cars per unit if I could. I don't have the space. But I have the need to provide enough units, one, to make this building feasible, two, to make a contribution to society. And, you know, if you think, well, developers, all they care about is making money. No, we don't only care about making money. We are architects, we don't make a lot of money. But we do care about doing things, we do care a lot of doing things that are right for cities. And this is the right development. You know, people may argue about parking spaces. The only time I said that there is a business that does not control its parking, and that's the gas station, because I know for a fact, they have absolutely no sign limiting who parks there. And they could do better and their problem would disappear if they monitored their space. I didn't say anything else about any of the other residents, any of the other members of the neighborhood, nor any of the other stores. I think this is a very well-suited site for housing and commercial. I believe it is and it would be in any city. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody want to?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. All right, who wants to start?
Really, you want me to go or? All right, why not? A couple of things. I think we really have only spoken, even though we've spoken for a very long time, we've really only spoken on two issues of contention. One was the elevation right there. Was the elevation in the glass element. And I think through the conversation with Mr. Seve and project architect, and then now the addition of what Ms. Porras says about the code adjustment, I think we've come to something pretty close to satisfying that visual element. I have to say that with the code element, with the code adjustment that Ms. Porras suggested, I think the addition of a usable balcony would be not only beautiful, but would add value to the units. I think you'd find that the units would sell for a higher amount, so I would prefer that. And I think that that certainly resolves the design issue for me. The second issue, as far as what I'll say, is site feasibility slash parking. I just want to say for the record that at least my issue is with the potential commercial use. It really isn't about the residential use because I believe it is residentially fully parked and totally appropriate, especially given how close it is to transit. I agree with the basic vision of the future of El Camino. I think we all do. I'm sorry, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I don't know if we all do. I do. But the basic vision of the future of El Camino is espoused by the architect. But easing into that future vision, I think, is where we all struggle. Finding something that's going to be, that isn't going to cause huge traffic and parking problems in the interim is a duty that I feel we, you know, it's why we sit up here for hours talking about this issue. The parking passes and putting a number on that would be very helpful. If we can also specify that employees of whatever commercial use parks away from the space, that would be helpful for me too, to help resolve the issue. And I'll leave it there for now.
I could have easily seen myself voting for this project. I could have. I'm going to vote against it. I don't particularly care to be lectured about the importance of residential infill. I'm a big supporter of residential infill. I think this project could be made to work. But my view is that the developer was more focused on crossing Ts and dotting Is and less at, you know, proposing solutions to the problem. Not saying they didn't make changes, they did. But I feel like there's more that they could have done and they chose not to. And so for that, I'm going to vote against the project.
What do you feel that they could have done that they didn't? That's a genuine question, not a snarky one.
No, no, I appreciate that. I think they probably could have made arrangements to make the five unbundled residential spaces available for periods of time during the day when they wouldn't normally be used. You know, for example, make five spaces available for commercial units between the hours of 10 and 4, when folks are less likely to be at work. You know, they could have added more lifts than they did. They didn't for economic reasons. You know, they could have worked with neighboring properties to secure parking. They could have done other things. I mean, it's not my job as a policymaker to come up with solutions. I've identified the problem. I was very clear about what it is. I think it's a real problem. I think there's going to be, I think there's going to be an uproar in the community when this is built and it causes traffic problems along Holly. And, you know, I'm a big fan of residential infill, huge fan, advocated for it, advocated for a larger transit village. I have no problem with residential infill, but it needs to be smart development, not development for development's sake.
This is a commission that's gone through so many infill projects and transit villages in Euler Plaza, so I agree. I think that it is, I mean, we look at everybody's side. And that's, you know, that's what my concern is too. I don't know if all the sides were looked at. This is such a visible location and I like the design, I wish it was smaller. But I know there's numbers behind that, so.
Well, and you don't have to answer this if you want. If not this, then what? I guess it's the other thing that I was thinking of because, I mean, is there still room to give on the parking that maybe we can discuss? Because if not this, then what really does make sense there?
Like I said, I mean, I think, I think that, I mean, there was going to be a proposal from the architect that, you know, the owner, and it's absolutely his right, asked the architect not to make. I don't know what that proposal would have been. I believe that I could have gotten to the place where I would vote happily for this project. What could go here? This project could go there if we could come up with a creative solution to deal with the parking problem. You know, if not this project, well, then I guess there's another lot nearby. Maybe they'll combine them someday and build something bigger with underground parking. I don't know. I just know when I see a project that I think is going to cause problems for the community as currently developed, and that's how I see this. I won't, you know, I'm not going to begrudge the rest of you if you vote for it. I mean, I understand it's not, it's not a clear-cut issue, I think, for everybody, but it's clear, it's clear for me that the project as it is right now, I, you know, I see more problems than benefits.
What about unbundled parking if we make that recommendation and see if they go for it?
Well, I think that they were already basically proposing some version of unbundled parking with one space per unit and the other five unbundled. And again, it's like, I don't, I don't want to be in a position where I am telling a developer how to solve a problem. I'm going to identify the problem and I'm going to let the developer solve it for me because I think that they know better how to develop property than I do. But I still see a problem that I don't see as being solved.
Scott, where are you at?
I'm somewhere in between both thoughts. I can see how, I can move into the camp of approving this, but there, first of all, there are, will be eight assigned or nine assigned parking spaces because there are nine units, okay? Which means there are going to be five unassigned parking spaces. Now, what I would like to do is to make those five unassigned parking spaces, two of them will actually be shared during the day. My guess is that the three that are not assigned, and even the ones that are not being used by the day, during the day, will actually be used by people who come in for the commercial. Whether we like it or not, we're all probably guilty at some point or another in our lives of parking in a place simply because there was a parking space available. And my guess is that there will be some additional parking available in these, in the back parking of this. I don't like the fact that there's no parking up front. But there's nothing I can do as far as changing El Camino.
I was just thinking, like, totally unbundled, right? Instead of one per unit, why couldn't you do totally, I mean, it's not, we don't usually do that in San Carlos, but that's really where things are moving, is if you go totally unbundled in the parking and then it may be a subscription, making provisions for the below-market rate unit.
That is, I understand that, but what happens if all of the parking spaces get purchased by somebody?
Then the next person that buys a unit would not want, would be supposed to use as transit and not have a personal, not have a vehicle. And that's really where, that's, I mean, you know, that's just an idea.
My personal feeling, I like the idea of unbundled parking, but I would rather see it sort of come about more organically, I think. I think that the one way to do this is, you know, transit passes for not only the commercial, but all of the residents. And the one thing that really, that I see is I want to make sure that there's a lifetime BM pass for the BMR unit, okay? So to me, I understand that the other units are going to get sold and everything, but the BMR unit, for the lifetime of the BMR unit, which could be 50 years, that needs to have a, you're doing a below-market rate. So that, you know, I'm almost in some ways willing to not require a parking space for the BMR unit in exchange for, you know, and that may free up another space for commercial parking. You know, I don't know, I don't know how to go about doing that.
My only concern with that, Scott, is it kind of makes a second-class citizen out of the BMR unit.
I understand.
There's one thing about giving them an advantage by a lifetime pass, but not giving them a spot.
One space plus a BMR, plus a transit, yeah. And I, you know, that's not my intent to make it a second class. It's to make sure that whoever has that unit, and in a lot of cases, it will be multiple members of a family working, and with only one parking spot, having a requirement for a transit pass, you know, to me, just makes sense.
Especially considering how much money goes, I mean, yeah, transit is such an expensive consideration for people in below-market.
It is.
Houses, yeah.
So that being said, you know, transit passes, the two, three, five years, my belief is that we push it out as far as we can for transit passes so that you get people accustomed to using transit. And if eight of the units are going to be purchased for sale, then, you know, I don't know how you do transit passes for owner-occupied units. And that's, that's something that I'm struggling with. How do you?
There would be a management company and the management company responsible for handing out the passes.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah. I mean, I work with management companies all the time. They could administer it.
An HOA.
An association.
As part of the cost, you set that up and the money goes in there for managing transit passes for five years. Okay, I can see that. So that's kind of where I am right now.
Lisa, I had a quick question. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, Scott. I know we had talked about getting a study session on BMR and affordable housing. Can you explain the financial? can you explain the financial assistance and how that works? And if you can, rough numbers as to what that looks like?
Unfortunately, I won't have numbers for the commission this evening, but financial assistance comes in the context of providing an incentive for providing the low-market rate unit. So there's a number of different options a developer could use for providing a below-market rate unit at a greater level of affordability, which would be the requirement in this scenario, where everything is owner-occupied, and they're going, and they're providing one, their rental, excuse me, their BMR unit as a rental unit. So I believe that's in the very low-income category. Maybe Jill can confirm. Very low? It's very low. So they have the option, and I think what they were requesting is because the requirement amounted to 1.3, I think it was 0.3 or whatever it was, that they would provide one, you know, the one unit, and then the remainder would be obtained through a partial fee requirement at the time of building permit issuance. The other option that the applicant has is to ask for a flexible setback allowance, which would resolve that issue of the third-story elevation. So they can only ask for one. And there are two findings associated with that, but it can be addressed by the commission through the design review process, so if that's something that the commission is interested in. I could go over those two findings, which I think staff would agree that the findings could be met. You can hear them and then make a decision on that aspect. But financial assistance is listed within the code, and they're just options to assist in the provision for the affordable housing. And we feel that we could have utilized the financial assistance to pay for that remaining partial fee requirement under their BMR calculation. I don't know what their calcula, I just don't have those figures off the top of my head. I don't know what that would be.
All right, thank you.
So when I look at this project, I look back at two other projects, one of which was the, it was either a five or six-unit building that we built on Laurel Street, or that we approved for Laurel Street, down at the south end.
900 blocks.
No, 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 down at the, way down at the other end.
They just broke ground recently, actually.
And we looked at it, and we said, oh, parking.
Are you talking about on Howard and Laurel?
Being way down near...
The one across from the old...
Near the salt box.
The really pretty ones? The new one, just been built.
Yeah, something like that, the new one. It's like three or four stories.
I think that's 167.
I think that's 1673 Laurel Street. It's on the, I guess if you're going down Laurel, it'd be on the left-hand side.
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, I struggled with the parking there, but my guess is that it's going to work out. And I know that there are parking issues down there. And again, it's the same type of condition where there's one parking for everybody, and then everything else is shared, okay? And there is no parking for the commercial. And I understand, in that case, there are actually parking spaces up front. In this case, they're providing two commercial spaces, at least shared spaces inside. So that's kind of similar in the parking to something that we've approved before. And then when I look at the balconies, I'd really love to have those balconies real, but I also look at the project that we approved on Laurel, the one that's just breaking ground in the 900 block, and the concern that if something else goes up beside them, that those balconies are going to be so close to the building next door that you could actually, you know, reach out and touch the other building.
Well, that was scaled quite a bit.
Yeah.
This project has an advantage over that one, in my opinion.
Well, it's a bigger lot.
Well, yeah, and because of what is next to it and what is likely to be next to it for a long time. And whereas the 900 block on Laurel, I see that being developed a lot quicker into something else.
Yeah.
I guess is why I would give the advantage to this project in that respect.
But I don't feel, I would love to see it, but I don't feel comfortable. I like the faux glass, the faux, I think that's the acceptable answer. I know, I'm not happy with it either. I'd rather see this, but I think that to go through a planned development, they're not going to do that.
No, that's not going to happen.
Well, and they wouldn't have to go through a planned development. They would, it would be triggered by their, by the BMR, right, Lisa? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. That's a provision, it's an incentive, correct.
Right. I mean, I'd really like to see a usable balcony. Quite frankly, I just think the actual tenants of the building would enjoy that more, and I think they could get higher prices. You know, I think it would be more marketable for them as well, plus I think it would also solve the beauty aspect. And I don't see the development of the Shell station happening soon enough for it to be a conflict.
They just spent a lot of money redoing that, so I don't think it's going to go anywhere anytime soon.
That's just my opinion.
Been there for, what, 50 years, 45 years, probably? So that's probably not going to happen either, even though I do agree that gas stations aren't always the best places, especially for Holly and El Camino, but it's there, and it's been there for a long, long time, so.
Do you, can you, Lisa, can you explain how we might be able to get those balconies on the side? And the, might as well just look at that and figure out where we go from here.
Certainly. So the findings that the commission would need to make to provide the incentive, which is referred to in the code as a flexible setback allowance, the commission would need to find, number one, that the proposed alternative design at the proposed location will not be detrimental or injurious to improvements in the vicinity, and will not be detrimental to the public health, peace, safety, comfort, general welfare, or convenience. And, number two, the proposed alternative design shall not significantly reduce the privacy of the adjoining property owners or significantly reduce sunlight into adjoining properties. And that's it.
I think I would need to bring those back.
And we would need to, I'm sorry, can you clarify?
So, what Lisa was just talking about with the balcony issue, that might be something that would need to be brought back before the planning commission, just because it was not made a part of this staff report.
So, here's a question. If we approved the project and then said we'd like the balconies brought back, is that something that can be done?
Yes, I believe so, yeah. Could be done as a condition.
As a condition.
Why would we ever approve a design review with a feature like that, that is important for a design review?
Say that again.
I mean, it's obviously a very important element to a lot of us, if that's, if this is going to move forward, and it's kind of like approving something on seeing if we can do it. And that's, I mean, I can't recall that ever being done, at least since I've been on the commission. Maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, I have to say that this, this one issue has been, to me, I mean, I think clearly I'd like the usable balconies, I think I've made my point. But if it, I also am, I do understand the time constraints put on the issue and having to come back. I understand that that's always a challenge. I am, from a design standpoint, I guess I'm okay with either. I really would, like, I'm okay with that not coming back, I guess.
Right, so what I'm saying is, we approve it with the faux balconies, and then allow them to come back if they want to for the other balconies, okay? And that way, that way, the decision isn't ours. It's something that they can come back. They can take the 0.35 financial assistance, or they can make the decision that the balconies are something that they really want, and, you know...
Since aesthetically, it's essentially going to look the same, I am okay with that. But Jesse, are you okay with that, since you're also bringing up the design review issue that we're sort of pre-approving?
I've got a lot of issues, so I don't think that's going to be the deal killer or anything.
Well, I'll say that I am okay with that.
Yeah, I am, too.
And through the chair, I know parking will probably come up again in your discussion. I believe the applicant had, during your discussion, came up to staff and indicated that they would be willing to have some sort of shared arrangement with the remaining five parking spaces. And if I haven't conveyed that correctly, I'm sure the applicant can clarify, that they would be willing to do that.
That would be downright lovely to clarify for the public record.
Would that make you happier?
Sure, absolutely, sure.
It's not going to change your vote.
It could.
It could?
It could, yeah. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to hear exactly what it is, what the proposal is. I mean, it can come through staff, we can reopen the public hearing. I don't, I don't really, but I'd like to know what it actually is. I'd suggest we actually just reopen the public hearing, because I still think that you want to get the agreement from the applicant on the transit passes, anyway. I'm not going to force the issue, but if folks are willing, I'll...
Yeah, I'm actually pretty strong on the transit passes for the below-market rate for perpetuity, I mean, for the length of the, for the length of the...
I think what Dave is trying to do is get it on the record that the developer's fine with that, so we can put that issue to bed. Is that correct?
That is exactly what I was proposing. So I think to make it simpler, I'd move to reopen the public hearing.
A second.
Can I have a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
So can we just get clear on what we're asking of the developer before we have them come up?
I'm asking what the proposal is.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, Jesse. So Lisa had mentioned that through staff, they were looking at five shared spaces, and so we would just want the developer to come up and talk about that. And Shannon had also talked about, feeling strongly about the transit passes, as had Scott.
Yes.
It's now open.
Thank you very much. I appreciate giving us the opportunity to be heard again. I spoke to the owner's representative, and yes, we are willing to unbundle, so there will be, each person, each unit gets one space, and that leaves five spaces, which are available for both commercial or residential use. The hours, I think we're going to leave that up to planning to tell us what the correct hours are, different businesses have different hours. But we certainly never meant to lecture anybody. What we're trying to do is move ahead with the project, and if for some reason I sounded that way, my sincere apologies to you, too, Mr. Chairman. So we would like to do that. We would like to offer the passes for the longer period of time, as you requested. We have other incentives that we are learning through other projects that we are doing, such as providing information on transportation times, train times, things like that, that can be made available through the management company. I would like to see if it's possible to have a real balcony up there. I think it would look better. However, we will accept the alternate as well. So please, by all means, select the one that you think is the best, and we will go ahead and execute that.
So let me ask a couple of...
I'd like to give you a choice, frankly.
Let me give you, let me ask a couple of clarification questions, if I could. First, as to the transit passes. So are you proposing to provide transit passes, one per unit, for five years? Is that basically what you're proposing?
I don't know exactly. There is, I believe, there are some instructions from people who do TDM plans, and I can call Hexagon and find out how they do this.
Yeah, there's a lot of variety. I mean, we've heard from Hexagon many times, many, 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 many times, and we've actually required a number of different things. What I've generally proposed to incentivize is offering transit passes at a 50% rebate. So basically, the person has to pay for half the transit pass, or you don't have to provide it. You just have to make available transit pass, one per unit, for, at a 50% subsidy. So if you're willing to accept that, that would be my proposal.
For five years.
For five years, okay. And then as far as the unbundled parking, what I'm looking for is that that, see, and I know that this is a conceptual thing, so I have no problem if staff is willing to accept a delegation, to delegate staff to work out with you what exactly the plan is. But what I, you know, I didn't like about what you said, and this is just because you were, it's an undeveloped plan, is that, you know, those five spaces will just be available. What I would like to see as a plan is that the plan identifies strategies to ensure that those five spaces are available for the commercial units during reasonable business hours, recognizing that the community is also going to want to use them. So whether that's making them two-hour spaces between the hours of 10 and 4, or something along those lines, I'm happy to delegate to staff. But what I'm asking from you is whether you're willing to commit to work with staff to develop a plan to make those five spaces available during business hours.
My concern is the Shell people will park there, so...
And also, I have no, I don't know if that was a joke or not. Regardless, it was funny, but no, I mean, that's developing, it could be two-hour spots, limited to commercial users, or even, you know, guests of the residents, but limited to your building, absolutely fine. But what I'm looking for is a plan that provides for use of those spaces during the day.
Absolutely, and I think what we're suggesting is, we initially had two spots in that category. We're expanding that to five.
Yep.
So all the other components would stay the same.
And so there's two other small pieces to this, and one is the BMR unit transit pass for the lifetime of the unit.
I'd like to see that subsidized, not 50%, yeah.
I agree with that. And then the other thing is, so instead of doing a full transit pass for all nine units and everything, I would also like to see a couple of transit passes at 50% for the commercial spaces. So one for each commercial space, or something like that.
Putting in three more spots for commercial?
And because I'm worried that the people...
You're thinking about the employees, right?
I'm thinking about the employees, for employees of the commercial spaces, not the customers.
So let me comment, first, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, so that we can get the developer's agreement, if I'm correct. You're looking for, in addition to nine subsidized, and when I say subsidized, I mean 50% subsidy, instead of nine, you're asking for eight for all the owned, plus two for the commercial, so 10 total, plus one longer-term, completely subsidized pass for the BMR. And I agree with all of that, with the exception, I think, of perpetuity is too long, especially considering the BMR unit is not in perpetuity.
Yeah, I misspoke.
For the length of the...
For the length of the BMR unit.
The BMR unit.
And, you know, I also, I mean, you know, how about 15 years, 20 years, 10 years? It just, 50 years seems like an awfully long time to me, so...
I'm okay with that. I mean, we can reduce the time, because in 20 years, it's going to look completely different on El Camino.
So let me ask you, so basically, what we're asking for agreement now is 10, 50%. And again, you don't have to provide all of them if the folks aren't willing to pay for the other 50%, but 50% transit passes, 10 of them, eight for the purchased units, one for each commercial unit, and one fully subsidized pass for 10 years for the BMR unit. Okay, thank you. All right.
And so if only four owners wanted transit passes, you only pay for, really, what you're paying is two.
Hexagon would be happy to run the program for you for a modest fee.
I wanted to make one clarification on the balcony issue. I think you made a very good point relative to there, if there in fact is a balcony, that that may increase the property value. However, we're not familiar with the fee and what it is that, in terms of...
What you'd be for going...
What were we given up? So we're not in a position to commit to that. I think at a minimum, you're going to get the faux concept, but we're very open to that, and I think once we get more educated about that, and as we look to develop...
It's an economic decision, we understand. And we'll leave it open.
So tonight, we'll make the decision to approve the faux with the option of you coming back for that decision.
Correct. And I just want to say sincerely, we're very open to that. I just, I'm not in a position, since I don't understand the dollars. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Can I get the motion up? Is there any further discussion?
No, I think we're at consensus.
So I move that the planning commission grant approval of the request for design review and a below-market rate housing plan for a new nine-unit mixed-use development at 520 El Camino Real with a couple of additions, that the developer provide 10 transit passes subsidized at a 50% subsidy, one for each owner-occupied unit, and one for each commercial unit for a period of five years, as well as one fully subsidized transit pass to the below-market rate unit for 10 years. In addition, that the developer come up with a plan approved by staff to make available during normal business hours, the five unbundled parking spaces in the building. In addition, that the developer provide a faux window and balcony on the, is it the north, north face of the building, with the option of coming back to the planning commission for approval of a flexible setback requirement in exchange for the below-market rate incentive. Did I cover everything?
Yeah, I think you got it.
Okay.
Second.
Staff understand the motion?
We do.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
No. Congratulations. All right, moving along. Reports, correspondence, and general information, report on recent city council actions.
As the commission may have heard, the council has had several study sessions on the budget. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to watch, but I think one concluded last Friday, and that was the community developments department's opportunity to describe to the council our budget. And I would say that our recommendations were received favorably, so that's good news. And I have no further council actions to share with the commission this evening.
Planning commission comments or reports?
I have nothing.
Correspondence. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
Yes, the commission's next hearing is set for June 6th, if we can believe that it's June already. But on the agenda for June 6th, we will have a full agenda, and I'd just like to share with the commission what some of those upcoming items include. One of the items that will come back to the commission is a discussion on the formula business ordinance that was passed earlier this year. There was a provision that it return to the city council for further review, and as part of that process, staff will be bringing that to the commission for any comments you may have that can be forwarded on to the city council for their consideration as to whether or not they're going to make this particular ordinance permanent, make modifications to it, or an alternative. In addition to the formula business ordinance, staff will be bringing forward an application concerning the 600 block of Laurel Street. This is an application to modify the ground floor facade, maybe reconfigure several commercial spaces, and add a second story consisting of just under 7,000 square foot of office space. That'll come before the commission. A small project that this commission had not heard, it's actually, was approved by a previous commission years ago, was for a project located at 2911 Appian Way. This is going to consist of the applicant's request for a reconsideration of approved colors, so that'll be before you. We may be ready. Did the commission have a question on that one?
It's the first time I've heard that, but...
2911 Appian Way.
We used to regulate the color of buildings, and that was taken out, I think, in the most recent general plan. Is that what we're talking about?
The new house design specifically had a condition that selected two primary colors for the house.
Oh, okay.
So because it was specific to a condition, and the applicant wants to change it, we feel...
That was something I felt very strongly about removing when we updated the general plan.
Okay.
We used to be able to tell people what color your house could be painted.
All right.
I believe the original approval was back in 2008, some time ago. It's a large house up on the hill that you...
Colors go out pretty quickly, so...
Yeah, the house just received its final, so it took some time to construct. So we'll bring, have to bring that back to the commission for your consideration. We may be ready to bring forward one of the projects that has been selected for your consideration for the on-street dining program. And in addition to that...
This is all June 6th? We're still talking about June 6th?
Correct.
Well, actually, unless we agree to extend the meeting, I think it's going to go to June 6th. If we do agree, it'll probably be on June 7th as well. That was a joke. Sorry.
And finally, as promised, the discussion on subdivision regulations, what our regulations are as compared to some other cities, as well as development standards that regulate house size. Staff will be ready to share that with the commission as well. Again, no more, no formal action, just a discussion. That will then move forward to the council, who also would like to have a discussion on that particular topic. And then, just to reiterate, the commission may have received, had an opportunity to review my email earlier today, but the Meridian 25 project is ready to come before the commission for your consideration for several entitlements. And those dates have been identified as May 31st, which is a Tuesday for a study session. No formal action is being requested of the commission. And then June 15th for formal action. And I just wanted to reiterate to the commission that we work really hard to try and pick an alternative date. I know there's some personal schedules that this date may conflict with, so we appreciate your willingness to work with staff and the consultant team. We want to make sure that the commission has all of the resources available at its disposal during the formal action date.
We're only going to have three for the approval date?
May 31st study session, and then targeting June 15th for formal action.
And, but there's only three planning commissioners available for the 15th?
No, I pulled the commission, and it looks like the commission, some of the commissioners that had personal conflicts are able to adjust if need be.
Got it, thank you.
So we, if that's the case, then we would have everyone in attendance.
Okay, thanks.
And that's all I have for this evening.
So I realize that I neglected inadvertently to make the second portion of the motion for the project we just did. It was intended, I'm just going to make it now. The only one here at the time that I made the motion was the applicant, anyway. I moved that the planning commission grant approval of the tentative map for a new nine-unit mixed-use development at 520 El Camino Real, APN 050-074-020.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
No.
So I think that consent agenda really worked well today, so let's...
I liked the effort, the attempt.
I really loved the idea of it, it just, you start pulling things out, it just does not work, okay? Meeting adjourned.[1774.13]